This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors.
For the we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
Ready, Susan?
Recording in progress.
All right, at six o'clock, I'll call our regular city council meeting for Monday, March 4, 2024 to order. We'll begin with opening prayer by Pastor Wesley from Main Street Baptist Church. Pastor.
Let us pray. Tell God, our Father, we thank you once again, Lord, that we able to come together. We ask, oh God, for your guidance, your lead, oh Lord. Please guide us along the way. Father, I ask a special prayer for those who make up on this board. I ask, oh God, that you will keep them humble, Lord. Father, I pray for those who will come and stand at this podium and present the things that will beautify and uplift this city. May you get all the glory in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. And our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Wesley. All right, we'll have the roll call of council members from our city. Shannon Strath.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morgan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
We'll begin with approving the minutes from the regular city council meeting of February 20, 2024. I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of February 20, 2024.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. On the consideration of agenda, I want to make note that we have two corrections on our presented agenda. Ordinance number, Agenda number two was originally printed as ordinance number 23-03-01, and number nine was presented as ordinance number 23-03-07, and those have been amended to 24-03-01 and 24-03-07 respectively. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move that we approve the agenda as printed and as you have noted.
Okay. Roll call, Shannon.
Councilwoman Morgan?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing in regards to 353 agreement for 526 Isley Boulevard. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I move if we open the public hearing for 353 agreement for 526 Isley Boulevard.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morgan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
The meeting is, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to make a public comment regarding this 353 agreement for 526 Isley Boulevard? Seeing and hearing done, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
We close the public hearing regarding 353 agreement for 526 Isley Boulevard.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morgan?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
The public hearing is closed. Second item on the agenda is consideration of 526 Isley Boulevard amended redevelopment agreement, ordinance number 24-03-01. Laura Meis, our neighborhood specialist, will present the details of this ordinance to the council.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The Community Development Department has for your consideration this evening an application for a Chapter 353 tax abatement for the property of 526 Isley Boulevard, an application made by Kevin and Sonya Morgan. This house is in the Boarding House District, and the improvements that this house needed, required were a gutter replacement, exterior paint, siding, and porch repair. And it's a beautiful two-story house in the Boarding House District. The Historic Preservation Commission reviewed this project, and it met all the requirements for HPC. The Excelsior Springs Redevelopment Corporation reviewed the project and found that it met requirements for this tax abatement. It's a zoned residential property and its owner occupied. It meets all the requirements listed in the residential guidelines for Chapter 353 tax abatements. The projected expenditures total $11,594.12, and it qualifies for 10 years tax abatement at 100%. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about this project if you have them.
Hearing no questions. This is the first of many ordinances to come, and so I'll entertain a motion to take, well, first of all, let me read the ordinance. For the first reading, an ordinance approving the 526 Isley Boulevard project amendment to the amended development plan submitted by the Excelsior Springs Redevelopment Corporation, authorizing certain tax abatements for the project area and approving a development agreement. I will entertain a motion to take ordinance number 24-03-01 to second reading.
I move we take ordinance number 24-03-01, consideration of 526 Isley Boulevard amended redevelopment agreement to second reading.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon.
Councilwoman Morgan?
I will abstain. This is my property.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
And for the second reading, an ordinance approving the 526 Isley Boulevard project amendment to the amended development plan submitted by the Excelsior Springs Redevelopment Corporation, authorizing certain tax abatements for the project area and approving a redevelopment agreement. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 24-03-01.
I move approve ordinance 24-03-01, a consideration of 526 Isley Boulevard amended redevelopment agreement, 353.
Second. Roll call, Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morgan?
Abstain.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
That ordinance is approved. Thank you, Laura. Agenda item number three is consideration of zoning text amendments to City Code 400.240, ordinance number 24-03-02, and Chantel Frye, our city planner, will present the details of this ordinance to the council.
So, Mayor, council members, good evening. This is consideration of the zoning text amendment to the City Code 400.240 pertaining regarding short-term rentals. Over the past several months, Planning and Zoning Commission has conducted multiple several, or multiple study sessions and formal regular sessions regarding the short-term rental considerations. In October of 2023, zoning text amendment was taken to Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration. The commission rejected further discussion, and the modified ZTA application was presented to the commission in December of 2023 and voted to recommend approval without incorporating a density or separation standard for short-term rentals outside the downtown tourist area. City council considered the planning and zoning recommendation in January of 2024. Following this discussion, city council amended the proposed ordinance and requested that the commission reconsider the concept of a density or separation standard which would occur outside of the downtown tourist area. The ordinance before you is for consideration of proposed amendment to the short-term rental that creates separation standard that of 1,000 feet between short-term rentals outside of the downtown tourist area. Staff is here for any questions that you may have considering the ZTA.
Do these also require a special use permit for the first two years?
When they are outside of the downtown tourist area, correct?
Okay.
And I would just reiterate my previous comments. I start with the question, what are we trying to solve? Because I'm not sure that we're solving anything with this particular ordinance, especially when we have a special use permit process already in place to request that information, get input from surrounding areas, then that's good for two years, and we can bring that back. So I feel like that's a pretty solid process. In addition to that, on the specific situation we had, there were already land covenants in place prohibiting that, so an additional ordinance, I don't think would have solved that particular issue. So I just, I'm not seeing what it is that we're trying to solve. I know you and I disagree on this one.
Definitely do.
But, you know, I've also, as I've tried to field questions and input from those in the community on this particular topic, and they, again, reiterate, they're more concerned about long-term rental issues than short-term rental issues. I've heard the comment about, you know, housing shortage and families who are looking for those homes. And I, while I understand that is our current environment, I actually had some information. If we were to be having this conversation in 2010, the average days in the market for a residential property is 112 days versus our current environment of 17 days. So 112 days versus 17 ties into a substantial change in inventory. Back up to 2008, 2009, and it was even longer than the 112 average days on the market. So again, I say all that to say, I'm just not understanding the reasoning for, I don't think it would have resolved the most recent issue, and I don't see what it would resolve going forward.
But at this time, we're looking at a evolving type of industry, and I guess my question to you is, do we wait until we have a problem and try to solve it then, or let's be a little bit proactive and get ahead of the game a tad? And because this is going to change from, you know, next year, we'll be talking about this in a different light, I'm sure. This is not something that's going to be consistent for any amount of time. I just want to get something in front of people so that we have at least something to work with should a situation come up. Yeah, the situation that I was dealing with is a little bit different, I agree, but I'd like to protect somebody else from going through the same hassle, too.
But wouldn't they be doing that through the special use permit?
They should, yes. But my question's always been is, if somebody comes before Planning and Zoning and Council, and they meet all the requirements, can we deny them because all the neighbors say, "I don't want it"?
And I hear what you're saying. My concern there is, is if you had a property that was not in the greatest of repair, but it was listed in as a short-term rental, then you had someone who wanted to come in down the street and redo to the fullest extent another short-term rental. So side by side, this one would be the more attractive property? They wouldn't be able to do that if we had this ordinance in place.
True.
So they would be prohibited from doing that because there's a property down the street that isn't as attractive versus leave this ordinance away and let the free market take care of it so that if someone's looking for a short-term rental, they're going to choose the better property rather than the least attractive property.
Well, you're using the same argument then, of free marketing, if you want to go that route, the market, the one that's not taken care of is going to go away anyhow.
Correct.
The problem that we were having was because there was no definition for the proximity in the proposal that we passed the last time. We're trying to go back now and add some definitions so that our staff has the teeth that they need to be able to do what is needed in our neighborhoods and protect our residents. Without those definitions and those tools in place, it's like you said, Reggie, this is an ever-changing environment for short-term rental. It's new. It's going to continue to change, but at least we have something in place moving forward where we know we can protect residents.
But what are we protecting residents from?
We're protecting residents from density if that's what they can't meet this density requirement. I understand you don't understand this, that you don't...
It's not that I don't understand. I think we're trying to regulate a problem that doesn't exist.
But the reason that we're going back and putting the density in it was because we can't do what you're saying by using the special use permit because we didn't have a definition of density included in it.
Those are my thoughts, and I think they were, that's what came to council the first time from the recommendation from planning and zoning. Leave it there.
I will add one comment to this discussion. I called P&amp;Z Commissioner Simmons before their meeting and had a lengthy conversation with him, and he leans more towards Mayor Pro Tim Spear's understanding that the free market will right the ship. And I, my comment to him was, I don't think the separation requirement is going to do anyone any harm. And so, and then I was delighted to hear it was approved unanimously in P&amp;Z. I don't think that will happen here tonight. But that being said, we have an ordinance before us. Is there any more discussion or comments?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I, what took place, Elms Boulevard, Kansas City Avenue, years ago in the 80s, where someone came in, purchased all the property with a plan for tourism, and it forced out a lot of residents that were down there. And Clarence Snyder, for one, in his longtime home. And it was not a successful rear vision for that community of shops and restaurants and stuff did not pan out. And it took a long time for that neighborhood to recover.
But this particular ordinance wouldn't even apply to that particular district.
No, not that district, but what I'm saying is some investor can come in and buy out a community.
And they can and call it long-term rental.
But it's still a community of residents.
Well, I think we all agree that long-term rental is something we need to take a look at next, so let's move on.
Very much agree.
If we could, let's move on with this ordinance. What is that squeaking?
Someone's chair. Reggie, quit moving.
Check out WD-40. I don't have it on. Okay, if we have no further discussion, I'll read the ordinance for the first reading, and then we'll take the second reading. An ordinance amending title for Chapter 400 zoning regulations, Section 400.240, accessory uses of the municipal code by adopting separation standards for short-term rentals. I'll entertain a motion and a second to take ordinance number 24-03-02 to second reading.
I move that we take ordinance number 24-03-02, consideration of zoning text amendment to City Code 400.240 to second reading.
Second.
Okay, have a first and a second. Any discussion on that?
Do you want any more discussion?
But I need to ask. All right, second reading is such, as such. An ordinance amending title for... Oh, sorry. Roll call, Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Just combative here.
Councilwoman Morgan?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
No.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
And now, an ordinance amending title for Chapter 400 zoning regulations, Section 400.240, accessory uses of the municipal code by adopting separation standards for short-term rentals. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 24-03-02.
I move that we approve. Here you go. I move we approve ordinance number 24-03-02, consideration of zoning text amendment to City Code 400.240.
Second.
All right. Roll call, Shannon.
Councilwoman Morgan?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
No.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
That ordinance is approved, and that is good, healthy discussion, and that's what a democratic republic is all about, right? Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of special use permit for 608 Benton Avenue, ordinance number 24-03-03. Chantel Frye, our city planner, will present the details of this ordinance to the council.
Mayor and members of the council, this evening in front of you is consideration of the special use permit renewal for 608 Benton Avenue. In 2022, this was originally granted for special use permit for the two years. It was brought back to a public hearing on February 26th, where it was going to, where it was recommended approval for the special use permit with no time limitation. So we are standing here before you on request of the special use permit to be approved in this ordinance to the where there will be no longer time limit and indefinitely. I was thinking the wrong word. And I'm here for any questions.
All right.
It's like my first time up here.
Any questions or comments for Chantel on this ordinance? All right. For the first reading, an ordinance approving a special use permit for a short-term rental in District R2, am I on the right one?
Yes.
Yes. Two-family residential at 608 Benton Avenue, City of Excelsior Springs, Clay County, Missouri. I'll entertain a motion to take ordinance number 24-03-03 to second reading.
I move we take ordinance number 24-03-03, consideration of special use permit renewal for 608 Benton Avenue to second reading.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morgan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
And for the second reading, an ordinance approving a special use permit for a short-term, short-term rental in District R2, two-family residential at 608 Benton Avenue, City of Excelsior Springs, Clay County, Missouri. I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 24-03-03.
Move to approve ordinance 24-03-03, consideration special use permit renewal for 608 Benton Avenue.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morgan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
And that ordinance is approved. Next item on the agenda is consideration of special use permit renewal for 1012 Sunset Strip, ordinance number 24-03-04, and again, Chantel Frye will present details.
I'm here again. So, Mayor and members of the council, again, here's a consideration of a special use permit with no time stipulation, which was heard at a public hearing February 26th of 2024. This is located in R1 single-family district and has been running as a short-term rental for the past two years since 2022. There was no, it appeared to be running in compliance with all City Code and standards, no violations, and no disruption to the neighborhood makeup. So I stand before you, presenting the ordinance number 24-03-04 to be approved with no time stipulation.
Any questions for Chantel on this ordinance? Okay. Our first rating, reading, an ordinance approving a special use permit for short-term rental in District R1, single-family residential at 1012 Sunset Strip Street, City of Excelsior Springs, Clay County, Missouri. I will entertain a motion to take ordinance number 24-03-04 to second reading.
I move we take ordinance number 24-03-04, consideration of special use permit renewal for 1012 Sunset Strip to second reading.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon.
Councilwoman Morgan?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
For the second reading, an ordinance approving a special use permit for short-term rental in District R1, single-family residential at 1012 Sunset Strip Street, City of Excelsior Springs, Clay County, Missouri. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 24-03-04.
I move we approve ordinance number 24-03-04, consideration special use permit renewal for 1012 Sunset Strip.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon.
Councilman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morgan?
Yes.
Councilman St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
Ordinance is approved, and we have Chantel before us one more time for consideration of rezoning 517 South Kansas City Avenue, ordinance number 24-03-05.
Mayor and members of the council, before you is the ordinance for the rezoning at 517 South Kansas City. The application is by the Duckwursts, who are now the property owners. They are wanting to rezone 517, which is currently the parking lot being used as a mill-in. It will continue to still be the parking lot as the mill-in. They're just rezoning it in purposes to combine the front parcel and that second parcel as one large parcel for convenience and maintenance and everything else. It was made clear that, because there was some pushback, that we received a letter from the neighbors in the area concerning the driveway, property lines. It was concerned, or was brought up, and the survey is required prior to them doing any type of moving of property lines, or not property lines, driveway, anything of doing of construction. So that survey will be required. It'll also be required as part of that lot combo. And then at this time, it was motion to pass with a four to one, and I'm here before you in consideration for this application of the rezoning of 517 South Kansas City. And I'm here to answer any questions.
The concerns that were raised at the P&amp;Z meeting, have those been addressed to the satisfaction of the neighbors?
They will be addressed once we have the survey, yes. But the Duckwursts reiterated, which you'll see in the staff report and in the meeting summary, the Duckwursts... the Duckworths reiterated that their intention is not to remove anyone's driveway, even if that property line is down the middle of there, so.
This is a whole lot easier than moving a property line.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Hearing no other questions or comments, our first reading on this ordinance, an ordinance authorizing and adopting the rezoning of certain property generally located at 517 South Kansas City Avenue Road in Excelsor Springs, Clay County, Missouri, from District C2A, Special Business District, to District C3, Service Business District. I'll entertain a motion and a second to take ordinance number 24-03-05 to second reading.
Move to take ordinance 24-03-05, consideration of zoning, rezoning of 517 South Kansas City Avenue to second reading.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John.
Yes.
Councilwoman Morgan.
Yes.
Councilman Rennie.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Mayor Spahn.
Yes.
And for our second reading, an ordinance authorizing and adopting the rezoning of certain property generally located at 517 South Kansas City Avenue Road in Excelsor Springs, Clay County, Missouri, from District C2A, Special Business District, to District C3, Special Business District. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 24-03-05.
I move we approve ordinance number 24-03-05, consideration of rezoning 517 South Kansas City Avenue.
I have a second.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie.
Yes.
Councilman St. John.
Yes.
Councilwoman Morgan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Mayor Spahn.
Yes.
And that ordinance is approved. Thank you, Chantel.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of environmental consultant for the state EI ERA grant resolution, our only resolution, number 1501. Melinda Mahaffey, our Economic Development Director, will present details of this resolution to the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Community Development Department has for your consideration this evening an agreement with TerraCon Consultants, Incorporated, to act as the environmental consultant for the EI ERA grant. This is a portion of the grant that can be reimbursed within the $250,000 portion of the grant that we have for this program. This is the project at Wyman School to do lead-based paint and asbestos-containing material abatement. And staff reviewed the two applicants that made proposals to us, and in consideration of both applicants, both were strong applicants. TerraCon, though, did rank higher, in part because of their experience with this particular site. They have done the Phase 2 study that was done for Wyman School that actually identifies the lead-based paint and the asbestos-containing material that have to be removed. So with that in mind, staff is recommending TerraCon Consultants, Incorporated as the, as the environmental consultant for this project. You have before you the agreement from TerraCon, and then a superseding addendum to that agreement. I put on your table this evening in front of you one change to the superseding agreement, which is to strike a variable frequency drive and put in environmental consultant services, and that's in red on your, on your agreement, so you can see that. Want to answer any questions you may have for us this evening?
Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve resolution number 1501. And let me read that. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with TerraCon Consultants, Inc. to provide consulting services for the EI ERA grant from Missouri Department of Natural Resources.
I move we approve resolution number 1501, consideration of environmental consultant for the state EI ERA grant.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilwoman Morgan.
Yes.
Councilman Rennie.
Yes.
Councilman St. John.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Mayor Spahn.
Yes.
Thank you, Melinda.
Melinda will be rescheduling a public meeting.
The, the listening session has been rescheduled to Sunday, March 24 at 4:00 p.m. in this room.
All right, next item on the agenda is consideration of memorandum of understanding with the Excelsor Springs School District, ordinance number 24-03-06, and our fire chief, Joe Matic, will present details of this ordinance to the council.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Before you is the renewal. It's been a one-year since we initiated the original MOU between the City of Excelsor Springs and the Excelsor Springs School District. It allows emergency personnel, fire, and police to open the FEMA safe room at Cornerstone Elementary after school hours. During school hours, their safety officer will be responsible for that. The MOU does allow us to leave any time we need to, and the school will assume all responsibilities of clearing all the citizens out of the safe room and locking it up afterwards. It's a one-year renewal. That's how the original MOU was written.
Any questions for Chief Matic? Okay. Our first reading, an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding with the Excelsor Springs School District. I'll entertain a motion and a second to take ordinance number 24-03-06 to second reading.
I move that we take ordinance number 24-03-06, consideration of MOU with the Excelsor Springs School District to second reading.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John.
Yes.
Councilwoman Morgan.
Yes.
Councilman Rennie.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Mayor Spahn.
Yes.
Our second reading, an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding with the Excelsor Springs School District. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 24-03-06.
I move we approve ordinance number 24-03-06, consideration of MOU with the Excelsor Springs School District.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call Shannon.
Councilman Rennie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Morgan.
Yes.
Councilman St. John.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Mayor Spahn.
Yes. Thank you.
Chief Matic.
Thank you.
And last item on the agenda is consideration of public element acceptance for Morocco State subdivision, ordinance number 24-03-07, and our Public Works Director, Chad Birdsong, will present the details of this ordinance to the council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Public Works conducted a final walkthrough inspection of the public element in the Morocco State subdivision per the requirements of the City of Excelsor Springs subdivision regulations. This inspection confirms that the site meets development standards for street access, fire protection, water and sanitary sewer service, storm drain systems, and the street lights. While the public and the private storm sewer conveying system is in, the private detention basin underdrain system that has an underdrain that is not installed yet, since the basin was being used as a sedimentation basin through construction, and it will be inspected and approved at a later date once the underdrain is complete. Morocco Estates LLC has provided a letter of guarantee of funds for the real estate development from their banking in the amount of $6,750 for this work, and it will be completed in the spring. As, as good plans have also been received from the engineer for documentation of this development and are on file at Public Works. The developer has included the required maintenance bond in the amount of $483,387 for the required maintenance of the public element for one year after this final acceptance. Those bonds are included in the packet. Ordinance is included, the approval of public element for the Morocco State subdivisions, and be happy to answer any questions if you have any. And let you know also Rocky McGlothlin is here. He's more than ready to sign the bond, or date the bond, to get this, the one year underway, so. If you have any questions, please ask.
Hearing no questions from Chad. Read our first reading on this ordinance, an ordinance accepting certain public improvements in the Morocco State subdivision by the City of Excelsor Springs, Missouri. I'll entertain a motion to take ordinance number 24-03-07 to second reading.
Move to take ordinance number 24-03-07, consideration of public element acceptance for Morocco State subdivision to second reading.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilwoman Morgan.
Yes.
Councilman Rennie.
Yes.
Councilman St. John.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Mayor Spahn.
Yes.
And the second reading, an ordinance accepting certain public improvements in the Morocco State subdivision by the City of Excelsor Springs, Missouri. I will entertain a motion to take ordinance, or to approve ordinance number 24-03-07.
I move we approve ordinance number 24-03-07, consideration of public element acceptance for Morocco State subdivision.
Second.
Roll call Shannon.
Councilman St. John.
Yes.
Councilman Rennie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Morgan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
Yes.
Mayor Spahn.
Yes.
Ordinance is approved. Thank you, Rocky, for being here, and thank you for investing in our community. Thank you, Chad. All right, we'll enter into a time of remarks by our city manager. I believe there are some transmittals that are present.
Yes, I just wanted to call your attention to the February court report, and there's a very interesting article regarding short-term rentals based on a study that the Mid-America Regional Council has conducted, so showing some trends that are occurring in the metro areas pertains to housing.
Anything else, Molly?
That's it.
Okay. We'll begin with remarks from the city council. We'll start down on this end this time. Councilman Rennie.
Nothing denied.
Councilman St. John.
A few months ago, we celebrated a employee that worked for one company for 50 years. This past week, we celebrated a company that's been in business for the last 50 years. And I think that's something that's really important that we may need to look at more often, celebrating those folks that make this town unique. Because in final analysis, that's what Excelsor Springs is about. It's about people who've been here for a while and make it what it is. And to be able to witness that and live part of that history that one of the benefits of being old, you get to see those things.
Experienced.
Okay, all right. And I think we need to be more cognizant of doing that.
Absolutely. It was a great event.
It was.
Oh, Councilwoman Morgan? Excuse me. Comments?
I just was sorry that I couldn't be there. You know, I was ill at the time, and that's a business that's been in the same family, you know, three generations now. It's wonderful to see that happening. And I couldn't agree more with Reggie that we need to find those people and celebrate them, and they've given that much to our community, so.
Absolutely. Mayor Pro Tim Spear.
So indirectly related to that, I've had a few conversations, and I just have been thinking this week, since that celebration, that, you know, we have businesses in our, in our community that aren't just businesses, they're fabric of our community. And there's, there's a distinct difference there. And I was just having a conversation, actually, with my wife, that, you know, I've, I've had the opportunity to travel across this entire country for the last 35 years in my career, and I'll tell you, I've, I've spent my entire life here, having visited all but two states. There is no place like Excelsor Springs. Just the uniqueness that's here, the, the, just who our community is. It's just extremely unique, and I, I hear that from people who discover our community for the first time, from time to time, and I think, you know, it's something that we do need to celebrate.
Absolutely. Well, I do have the opportunity to attend that celebration, and, and I commented both at the city council meeting, and then when we presented the proclamation, then when I read it again for that celebration, that I felt like I was along for the 50-year ride because of some close relationships and the dealership there. And I made reference to the old timers. I wasn't politically correct when I identified Ed Palmer and Stony, which have passed on, but then there's Chuck, and so hopefully I didn't offend my, my brother Chuck. But it was a great celebration. There was a, a resolution from House Representative Richie, and one that Mayor Pro Tim Spear read from Senator Denny Hoskins, and then the one that we presented from the city. And then, earlier in the week, I had an opportunity to enter, to attend the grand opening celebration for Full Service Bank at Farmer State Bank, and got to meet the CEO and president of the bank, and welcomed him to the community. And he made a comment that he was a little bit reluctant when he first had the opportunity to invest in the community, and he said, "The deeper I dig, the more I like Excelsor Springs." So, sometimes you just need to scratch below the surface a little bit. Anyway, those are my comments. I will, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion on adjournment?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Don't think we need a roll call, let go of Shannon.